Thank you. Okay, Roca, please.
Button. Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Crapp.
Here.
Mencer.
Here.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Button.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Button. Second.
Roca.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mencer.
Yes.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, and communications and reports. This evening, we have a presentation of certificates of appreciation to the Macomb Cultural and Economic Partnership. But before I hand those out, I understand we have a little presentation from Kathy Banks or Ed Bruley. I'm not sure which one.
Or both.
Or both. I'll say add a tag team.
Thank you. My name's Ed Bruley. I'm with the Macomb Cultural and Economic Partnership. And this summer, we tried, piloted a new project. And that is to employ younger people in cleaning our neighborhoods. To the point that we worked on northbound Grashit, Main Street, southbound, and the connecting streets. To the point that if you would go by on one of the two days a week that young people were working, you wouldn't find one cigarette butt in the street, on a lawn, in a driveway. These are the three young people that volunteered, basically, to work this summer to do it. And I'd like to introduce Kathy Banks, who was the lead mentor for the program this summer. Kathy?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for this program. These are my ladies, and they, I call them ladies all the time. And we basically learned job skills. We learned a lot about how, what it is like to have a job, what it's like to, what do you do once you get a job. But in the meantime, we actually did pick up trash and garbage on the streets of Grashit and the surrounding areas. And I am going to have them demonstrate what we did. I do have fake cigarette butts, so you'll see what it's like. It took me a while. I even put lipstick on one of them, so you see what it's like. Excuse the cigarette butt. Some of them aren't as orange as they should be, but so, but they are. Our Starburst Show, Jamie is going to actually read the PowerPoint that we have presented for you. And hopefully, you'll understand a little bit more about us. So, we are going to pick up all the trash, but I just want to.
Hi. Basically, I'm going to be talking about the Neighborhood Conservation Corp., about what we do. And these two are going to be picking up this stuff and demonstrating. So, what the Neighborhood Conservation Corp. does is an effort to keep our main streets clean. And in total, there's going to be one adult, three students, ages fourteen to sixteen. We work three times a week for six hours. And the students get paid eight dollars per hour. This is funded by the Macomb Cultural and Economic Partnership, MCEP for short. And it's located at ninety-two Northbound Grashit in Mount Clemens, Michigan.
So, we're going to talk about who we are.
Hi, my name is Destiny. I'm sixteen years old, and I'm currently a sophomore. I learned what it is like to have a job. I also learned that attendance is very important, and I learned that if you want money, you must work for it.
I'm Jamie. I'm sixteen. I am also currently a sophomore. I learned to go outside more often instead of playing on our electronics inside. I also learned how to speak up more, since when I first started, I was very, I never talked at all. And I also learned how to cash a check.
Hi, my name is Chantel. I am fourteen years old. I am in eighth grade. I had, I had fun with some things. I learned how, eh.
That's okay. Just take your time. Take your time.
Okay, Destiny had some fun, had fun doing some things. I'm sorry. Chantel. Chantel had fun doing some things, some things she didn't. She learned what a check looks like, okay? She actually, come on, come on. She learns what a check looks like, how to sign, how to endorse it. She actually went to the bank and cashed a check for herself. I was very proud of her. And she also learned how to be respectful of others. Okay? Destiny, all three ladies learned a lot.
What is expected from us is to show up on time, be prepared to begin our job promptly, prepare our time sheets, be observant, and to follow directions. Since she can't speak in front of people because she's very shy like me, I will do the rules as well. What we can do is clear out litter from assigned areas, take necessary precautions, wear gloves and safety nets, and be careful near the roads. What we cannot do is we cannot cross the fence lines into the backyard, pick up items from the street, and we have to be, make sure we do not sit in front of lakes.
Actually, this is basically the amount of trash that we picked up daily. Okay, we picked up the amount of trash that we picked up daily on several different streets. Some areas were much, much, much more trash than others. We tried to cover those first. And then we would go as far, we went as far as, as far south as the bridge, and then as far north as the bridge. And we went as far as west as Main Street, okay? We didn't do much east. We did the side streets. But we didn't do the, that, what street is that you used to live on? We didn't do Bay Street. We didn't go as far as Bay Street, okay? Finally, we learned, we learned to always cash checks at banks. It's surprisingly, I didn't realize that a lot of people didn't know that they had to go to a bank and cash a check. They educated me on this part. They were under the impression that they could go to other places to cash checks, you know, party stores, whatever. So, I did teach them that they do have to go to the bank and cash your checks. We learned how to go to the bank. We role-played on how to go up to the teller, what the teller was going to say to them. The teller's going to ask them how they want their cash, and they had to respond. They had to speak up. That's one of the things that Jamie had mentioned before. They had to speak up, okay? They learned the five point, checkpoints on a check, so they know how to identify whether or not a check is valid. So that if someone was in the future, someone to give them a check, and it didn't have the date, or it didn't have a signature, or the date was two weeks in advance, they knew that they couldn't cash it. And they also learned how to put their money away before leaving the bank, instead of walking around and carrying it and waving it in the air. They learned that they had to put it in their purse, or in their wallet, or in their pockets before they stepped out of the bank. And last but not least, they found out how important it is to have a savings account. Do you have any questions?
Very interesting. But we have some certificates we'd like to present to you and the ladies. I'll save Chantel's until she comes in. We'll get her back here. Okay, Jamie.
This is Destiny.
Destiny. In appreciation for your efforts to help keep Mount Clemens clean and beautiful, we'd like to present you with a certificate of recognition.
Thank you.
Kathy. Also, for all that you did in educating these young ladies, that's wonderful. And we just appreciate it so much that you're doing so much for Mount Clemens. Thank you so much. And Ed? Jamie, I want to give you a certificate of appreciation and recognition for all your hard work and for keeping Mount Clemens beautiful and clean. And we really want to thank you for that, all of us. Okay, we'll wait. Okay. Ed. Ed, we'd like to also present a recognition to the Macomb Cultural and Economic Partnership for recognizing the importance of keeping Mount Clemens clean and beautiful and providing the resources to help achieve that goal. So, we really appreciate what you're doing. And as a nonprofit, this speaks highly of the, or the MCEP, as I call it, for stepping forward and doing something for the city that's important and keeping the city clean and attractive. Especially your area also with all the gardening and the flowers. So, we really appreciate what you're doing.
Well, thank you, and we appreciate what the city's done for us.
Let her know that we really appreciate.
Thank you.
It's a great lesson, Kathy. I think you should share with more what you're doing. Those are all things that, you know, don't get taught. Okay. No, I'll give it to her. I'll wobble back up. This is Chantel. We want to give you, from the City of Mount Clemens, and all the commissioners back here, and myself, a certificate of recognition for all the efforts that you did by keeping the city clean and beautiful. So, thank you so much. Are there any other reports or communications or presentations from the board?
Mayor, I just have a few quick announcements about meetings for this month. I just have an announcement that the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Commission meetings that were scheduled for September sixth have both been canceled. There's a Historical Commission meeting on September thirteenth at seven o'clock PM in the second-floor conference room. There's a Housing Commission meeting on September nineteenth, seven o'clock PM, the second-floor conference room. Traffic Safety Committee will be meeting also on September nineteenth in the second-floor employee lounge. The Cable Commission will be meeting on September twenty-sixth at the Macomb Cable Network at six thirty PM. And the Harbor Commission will also be meeting on September twenty-sixth at nine o'clock in the morning right here at City Hall in the second-floor conference room. And that's it.
Thank you. Okay, adoption of the agenda. Need a motion?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support. Roca.
Ford.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mencer.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Okay, this is public participation time. This is when, the time that you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and that you adhere to the three-minute.
Ruthie Stevenson, sixty-nine Bain Street. I'd just like to piggyback on the presentation that was before us to let the rest of the city know that we are responsible for our streets. And homeowners, pick up the trash in front of your homes and houses. On, when she mentioned Bain Street, Bain between Robertson and Clinton River Drive. Believe me, we keep that end of Bain Street clean all the time. But the other thing that I had on my mind was, is there any way the city can set up a meeting with the post office? You know, it, it seemed like it was getting better at one while, but, you know, you can, can't teach an old dog new tricks. But they have a tendency to keep coming back. And they're going farther into the neighborhood down Clinton River Drive and, and around Bain, going on to Rome's, and even parking on the opposite side of Meadow Street. Is there any way you can get a meeting set up with the union and the postmaster where members of us in the community can sit down, and, you know, leadership in the community can sit down and have some conversation as to how we're going to resolve this situation? As was stated before, you know, from the city, I understand that it's a public street. Don't get me wrong, but it's not an all-day parking lot. The only way this community can use its streets is on Sunday and on a holiday. And it's getting to be the point that, you know, like the one young man was stating, postal worker, was that now that they're working with, you know, that organization, Amazon and all the rest, they're going to be working Sundays as well. And, you know, people are dying, there's weddings, there's family events and stuff. And here, we can't even use our streets, and it's unconscionable. And, and one of the issues that was brought up was one-sided parking. Put up a no-parking sign. That's not, that's not an issue. What you're saying is all right to park in the neighborhood. What I'm saying is not all right to park in a community neighborhood to take the aesthetics away from the community and being a community. The post office has a responsibility to get parking for its employees. And that's what I'm saying. You know, can the city work with the, with the community and the post office to hopefully get this matter resolved? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Jean Dixon, Jean Hamilton Dixon. I have lived in Mount Clemens for sixty-five years. I was born here. I worked at Mount Clemens School District. I'm retired from there. And I just wanted to come and talk on the nine-eight that you had on the agenda last, on August twenty-first. On the public hearing for the proposed activity in a floodplain, community development block grant of Shady Side Park Projects, C-six, twelve, two B, and C-seven, twelve, and two B. Before Clinton River Drive became Clinton River Drive, I lived on Prospect. And running down into Shady Side was something we were able to do quickly from home. So, it was like, it's our neighborhood park. So, I just, I have a heart for Shady Side. I want to say I am a part of River Acres Community Organization. I am the secretary. And we had a function, a community picnic, on August fifth. And everything went fine. It's a community thing, and it's like for us to come out and meet each other, because new people are constantly moving in every day. Excuse me for the nervousness.
That's all right.
But anyway, I just jotted down some things. Upon watching the city meeting, I saw you're going to do some amenities. And I think Ms. Stevenson mentioned why were they going to be. So, we, as a community, we would like to know. We would like to stay informed on what they're going to do. Number two, my first concern are the bathrooms. Other parks, when you look at Wilson Park, they have their gym that they were able to keep up, and that remains locked. And they probably get a key for special occasions. You have Joy Park on Joy Road, they have a restroom. You have Neil Reed Park. Those are, those are Clinton Township. But they do have restrooms. And, and those were just things that came to my mind immediately. And so, Shady Side should have some way of having restrooms. We have a building. There should be some way they can fix them. And if they have to put a camera there for security, we have police, the chef now has, where they can look and don't have to be there and see what's going on in our neighborhoods. We know that. Anyway, and then the second thing is the place game. The equipment there is so old, it doesn't even rock. So, how fun is that? The swings are out too far. If you have it at a picnic table, some of your kids run this way, some of them run that way. And then we have the trail. So, you have to watch your children, true enough, but you know, things can happen very quickly. Number five, number four or five, I don't know. I would like to see a bigger baseball, basketball court. It's, it's small, and it's, it's okay. But we used to have one right at the corner of Barbara and Lindsey, and it was a bigger area. And I think that's what our kids do. So, we want to entertain our children. The other area, the baseball area. Kickball is coming back. I'm sixty-five, and I think I can kick a ball and maybe run a little bit. So, I think the, the baseball area could be made into a baseball diamond like it should be. My big wish, and this is my last thing, I would love to see a radio-controlled car track down at Shady Side. All boys get radio-controlled cars that would keep them off the street in the summertime, and seeing those little cars run out in front of you, you've got to immediately stop. And then maybe if that came down there, even I would get me a car, because girls have cars too. So, boy, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come forth.
Hello, Michael Zubis, two-two-one Cass. Hopefully, I'm not too close, sorry. I've got a few things, something got added to my schedule here. But first, things first. I was recently told by the last meeting by Ms. Denser, or Mencer, I'm so sorry, that she was repeating something that was stated to her by the Clinton Township Watershed Council about there needing to be some cleanup events coming up in the twenty-third because they're having a big event where they're having every, all kinds of cleanups up and down the river. But Mount Clemens doesn't have one. So, I contacted Abigail Lane over there through, because of Ms. Mencer, I should say, and was able to make an event for Shady Side Park on the twenty-third and an event for MacArthur Park on the tenth. Because I feel like MacArthur Park also needs a cleanup. So, hopefully, both events can be very good. I already have a lot of people I've talked to personally that want to show up. Some people in and out of the county, so I'm hoping for a good bit of attendance, at least five people. The, the county will provide bags and gloves, so you guys won't have to worry about bringing anything. But maybe some water or something, if you guys need water and to go to the restroom beforehand. But my other thing is, I heard, I'm sorry, the lady here, her idea of the postal service issue. I've noticed recently that the liquor store over there, or a party store, whatever you may have it, on Main Street recently closed down. And I think that that is the perfect opportunity for us to raise that building and turn that into a parking lot for the employees there. That would probably alleviate the situation, and, well, I mean, there's plenty of other places for a liquor store to open up, and one not on Main Street for sure. So, I think that's all I have. Really nice T-shirt, ma'am. Really nice T-shirt. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Lydia Williams, one-eighteen Meadow Street. Just to clarify, I was here at the last meeting when you did talk about Shady Side Park. There was also mentioned that you were going to continue at this meeting to talk about it and possibly set up a committee to decide what needs to be done at Shady Side. I didn't see that on the agenda, so I don't know if I've overlooked it. It could be in something else, or... Because you had said it could be a committee in place to help out to, what to do with the grant money?
No, because there still needs to be a few phases yet before. I don't believe that was discussed.
Who said that we were going to have it? Do you remember? Well, we'll, we'll look into it, okay?
Okay.
And that, but we'll follow up with that and call Ms. Borges. Okay, you know, Lisa. Give her a call, and I know they're still working on a number of things over there before we get to that step. But they'll be able to.
There are a few more steps yet before they can even continue with it. So, there will be opportunity, but we'll find out more about any kind of committee or some way that you can contribute. There will be another public hearing, yeah.
I guess the other thing we want to say too is there isn't a whole lot of money that we can put into this. So, working together with the community.
Yeah, we could do fundraisers and do, is that allowed for the community?
Sure. The Mount Clemens Foundation, who has done other parks along with the community in those parks, is something that we have talked about doing in the foundation because Shady Side was one of the next parks to do, but we found the price was really up there. But I think we can take smaller steps, and I think the foundation can help out too. So, but we'll get together with you and the foundation to see what we can do as a community to raise funds, to help to offset what we have here at the city that we can do. Okay? And I did say that, and I will get with you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Keisha Harrison, eighty-two Crocker. I'm a lifelong resident of Mount Clemens as well. And this is my first time attending a city council meeting, but I do have a vested interest in what happens to Shady Side Park. I will be forty-three on Thursday, and I spent many a summer, and I still spend quite a bit of time at that park with my daughter. Compared to other parks, it is substandard. The equipment is the same equipment that I grew up playing on. I did hear, and, you know, the comments that you made to Lydia about the follow-up and forming a committee. Is there some type of timeline for that, and what type of notification is going to be made so that the community can be involved and see what it is that we need to do to support fundraising efforts?
Okay, again, I'm going to refer to the city manager here.
Okay.
I don't know what is left to do and the steps that they're taking with the funding that they're going to be using to do some of the things. So, once that's done, then they can move forward with the rest.
Okay, and the notification process for those meetings or that type of thing?
No, we haven't set those up yet, so.
But they're coming.
Yeah, stay tuned. We've got your address, seriously. They still have some things to do behind the scene with the funding that they have. But once that is taken care of, once they get everything together, then we'll move forward.
All right, that's taken. Thank you.
Anyone else? You had your three minutes. I'm sorry. Okay, moving right along. Administrative, we don't have any, do we? Approval of the minutes, previous meetings.
Motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the meeting of August twenty-first, two thousand seventeen.
Support. Roca.
Hill.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mencer.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
General Business, nine-eight, adoption of a resolution establishing and revising fees applicable to water and sewer services at the City of Mount Clemens Water and Wastewater Treatment Plant. I need a motion.
Move to approve the adoption of the resolution establishing and revising fees applicable to water and sewer services at the City of Mount Clemens Water and Wastewater Treatment Plant effective October first, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
The resolution is to revise current and establish new water and wastewater treatment plant-related rates for miscellaneous services effective October first, two thousand seventeen. These revised rates were reviewed with the City Commission at the January seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, and August twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, work sessions with city engineers from AEW. It has been many years since these types of fees have been reviewed or updated. The proposed fees are based on actual labor and material costs to provide the service and are consistent or less than amounts charged by other communities. A water turn-on fee after hours of seventy dollars and final water bill fee of fifteen dollars are new proposed fees, which are similarly assessed by surrounding communities. Since property owners hire outside contractors to perform water and sewer tap installation, these fees are recommended to be set at an amount representative of the city performing inspection and administrative work rather than the tap installation and construction work.
Questions, comments? Okay, Commissioner Mensor?
I am glad to see us updating some of our fees and the structure for the fees. Um, we have been behind in this. Some of these fees, when we look at them, they have increased and some of them have actually decreased to match what the surrounding communities are, and I'm appreciative of the work that, uh, was done to put this, uh, spreadsheet together, uh, and clarify the rates. So, I thank the Water Department and our, uh, subcontractor.
Anyone else? Commissioner Crap?
I wanted to, um, thank, uh, I'm assuming that our new Utilities Director is to think with AEW and, and our, um, our city administrative staff, but I feel like we are, uh, the, the ball has really started rolling, um, and getting things where they need to be since she came on board and, um, and her coming on board actually saved us money from using a subcontractor, um, instead, and so I really appreciate all that you've done and all the other staff has done to do that, um, and to get us kind of modernized, and that, that's, um, I think something that we, our, our community can be proud of, so...
Anyone else? Uh, Ro-Cop, please.
Crap?
Yes.
Mensor?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Nine B, request authorization to accept a grant from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for the DTE Energy Foundation Tree Planting Program. Need a motion?
I move to approve the grant from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for the DTE Energy Foundation Tree Planting Program in the amount of three thousand dollars with an approximate local match of three thousand dollars.
Second.
The DTE Energy Foundation, in cooperation with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, made available a tree planting grant to communities throughout the service area of DTE Energy and its subsidiaries. Communities must commit to a fifty-fifty match as a part of the grant criteria. The city has received a conditional commitment from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for funding in the amount of three thousand dollars from the DTE Energy Foundation to purchase replacement trees lost due to age, deterioration, and/or disease. This grant award would be matched by an allocation of up to three thousand dollars from the local street funds for the remaining balance of the trees and installation costs.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Mensor?
Was this you again, Jeff Wood?
Yes.
Jeff, you are a gem of an employee, and the number of grants that you have brought to this city, not only for street repairs, um, but for greenery, is just amazing, and I really wish that we could give you like, you know, ten cents a dollar, 'cause you'd be rich. We are, we are thankful to have you. You rock, Jeff.
Anyone else?
Um, now I'm gonna make fun of Jeff, kind of. Um, so, um, we, uh, just, uh, when I was reading this grant application, it talked about where we're gonna put the trees, and, um, we just had a bunch of people complaining about the sidewalks and, and the trees causing damage to the sidewalks, and so I was just wondering, are we, are we planning to put the trees back by the sidewalks?
Um, they, they do have to go in the regular way.
Okay.
Um, so, yes. Um, where they are going is actually residential requests.
Okay.
Nope.
So, they must not mind. Okay.
You have a list, right?
Right, I was gonna say.
You have a list of people that have requested trees.
Yeah, can you give me a reference if they come up to the microphone?
Do they get a, do they get a choice of which tree, Jeff?
Um, to some degree, yes.
Okay. So, if you're on the list, you're getting trees.
Some, some trees.
What if you don't want a tree?
You don't get a, the tree then.
I don't know.
Right, he's, that's what he said, you don't get a tree if you don't want it.
Yeah, if you're, really what this is going to purchase is, um, we have created a list over the last few years of residents who have called looking for a replacement tree due to one being removed from, in front of their property, and the majority of these trees will go to those types of requests. So, if there's somebody that is, um, if we have a couple extra trees, we will look for people who are interested in receiving those trees, so...
I do have a question. Um, is there an effort made to try and plant trees that don't disrupt the sidewalks so much?
It, there, there is, yes, um, and that's part of, um, the grant criteria, uh, it's a specific, um, there's four different trees that we're getting, and there's specific trees, um, to try and limit that disruption, limit, um, disruption to overhead wires and that kind of stuff.
Okay, good. Plus, they're very little, aren't they?
Yeah.
Now, I have a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Some of these trees grow into the sewers that have, people that have crocs out front.
Right, now, what, what we do is, um, we do our best to not put those trees over top of that, we will do a, uh, misdig prior to the placement of the tree to make sure that we're not directly over top of, uh, sewer or water service.
Okay. Anyone else? Ro-Cop, please.
Thank you.
Hill?
Yes.
Crap?
Yes.
Mensor?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Approve purchase and payments of invoices. We have a motion?
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, Ro-Cop?
Crap?
Yes.
Mensor?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Motion on the consent agenda?
Move to accept the, uh, move to...
Approve.
Thank you. Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Ro-Cop?
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crap?
Yes.
Mensor?
Yes.
City managers report?
Uh, there was not a work session held prior to this evening's meeting. A work session will be scheduled though for, uh, the next meeting, Monday, September eighteenth at six P.M. for city commission updates prior to the regular meeting at seven P.M. A reminder that refuse pickup will run one day behind schedule this week, from today, September fifth through September eighth. Uh, the annual Soapbox Derby Pancake Breakfast will be held on Saturday, September ninth, from seven-thirty A.M. until eleven A.M. at the Mount Clemens Fire Department. Adults, uh, for breakfast are five dollars, seniors are four dollars, and children eleven and under are three dollars. Proceeds will be donated to local charities. Please come and support this worthwhile cause. The annual Mount Clemens Grand Prix Soapbox Derby Race will take place on Saturday, September ninth, weather permitting, at, uh, ten A.M. on the Cracker Bridge. For more information, please contact five-eight-six-four-six-eight-seven-seven-four-six. And the Farmers Market on North River Road will be hosting their annual tater pork roast on Saturday, September sixteenth, from nine A.M. until it is sold out. The market will be open from seven A.M. until one P.M. For additional information, please contact the Macomb County Chamber at five-eight-six-four-nine-three-seven-six-hundred.
Questions, comments? Okay, Commissioner Report? And we'll start with Mr. Ford.
I agree with the residents that something needs to be done with Shady Side, but you have to remember, a couple years ago, less than ten years ago, the city put a lot of money in putting those bathrooms in, and then people vandalized them. People who live on Shady Side are gonna have to take care of that park. I think that park, the city has spent more money in that park than any park in Mount Clemens, so it's up to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensor?
Welcome to a new school year. Um, we have, uh, a new superintendent of the Mount Clemens Public Schools, Teresa Davis. We have new co-principals at Seminole Academy, Elizabeth Jensen and Ann McCormick, and we have five new teachers and four new coaches. Some good news, Seminole Academy has started a writing club, a Spanish club, a friendship club, and a garden club, all good things. The middle and high school has started a chess club, a golf club, and an optimist club, um, and I'm very happy about the optimist club. Uh, the Mount Clemens Optimist Club helped start that, uh, uh, that at the high school, it's called the Joy Club. Last Thursday, our battling bathers football team beat Detroit Douglas twelve to six in an overtime game. I understand it was pretty exciting, um, and keep in mind Friday, this Friday, their home game i- is against Old Redford, so, you know, go out and support the team if you can. Um, the Mount Clemens High, uh, School All Alumni Reunion is Friday, the eighth, at the Rec Bowl, starts at five, goes to closing. My dad graduated from Mount Clemens High in nineteen fifty-five. I am trying to talk him into going, I said I would personally drive him, but so far he has been resistant, so Dad, come on, you got a free chauffeur wherever you are, he li- he watches these. So, uh, and I wanna, you know, say pancakes and firefighters, how can you go wrong with pancakes and firefighters? Seven-thirty to eleven. The Anton Art Center has a new exhibit that started today, goes through October thirteenth, is an exhibit of artwork by new and existing, uh, art center members. Um, there is an opening reception Saturday, the ninth, we got a lot happening in the city on the ninth, uh, that reception goes from two to four. I also want to remind you that Patriots Day, September eleventh, is next week, Monday, and as we approved in the consent agenda tonight, the Macomb County Fallen Heroes Memorial is holding its annual, uh, ceremony to honor firefighters, police officers, and EMS who died in the line of duty. The ceremony starts at seven in front of the, uh, memorial, which is on Main Street, in front of the courthouse, forty Ma- uh, Main Street. Um, we will be, uh, honoring, uh, Chief Edward Sawitzky, who, uh, was, uh, from the Fa- Mount Clemens Fire Department, he died on January thirtieth, nineteen twenty-nine in the line of duty. We will also be honoring Patrolman Robert J. Arons from the Mount Clemens Police Department, he died on November first, nineteen seventy-three. So, uh, it would be really nice to see a good turnout there, um, and support our fallen heroes. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Crap?
Um, there will be, uh, a town hall with Representatives Lucido and Hertel about Lake St. Clair, where, um, residents all around the area are encouraged to come and speak their minds about the quali- like, water quality, um, in both the river and Lake St. Clair. Um, that's gonna take place on October second, Monday, October second, at six P.M. at McEnroe's on North River Road. Um, the Anton Art Center is having their annual art party, and that is Septem- uh, September fourth, Thursday, September fourth. Tickets, oh, sorry, and I wrote it down, it's the fourteenth too, sorry, Thursday, September fourteenth, thank you. And, uh, the tickets are on sale, uh, right now at the Art Center and online, um, you can purchase them right online, um, at their website. Uh, the coffee talks that I'll be hosting, um, for this month are next Tuesday, September twelfth, and next Saturday, Saturday, September sixteenth, both at nine-thirty A.M. at John's Family Grill. Um, and I would like to say a huge thank you to the ladies and to M.C.E.P. for the presentation today, um, and all their work, um, that they did in the neighborhoods and on Grashit, um, and, um, neighborhood, the Neighborhood Conservation Corp. I was really impressed to see that, um, Macomb Cultural and Economic Partnership that is a nonprofit in Mount Clemens, so they occupy a building in Mount Clemens, they own, uh, own land, and they don't pay taxes because they're a nonprofit. And so, um, they identified a problem in Mount Clemens and, and a need in Mount Clemens, and they put some of their resources, which I'm sure as a nonprofit are precious resources, just like our household budgets, and they, um, put money towards that as a thank you to Mount Clemens for not having to pay property taxes and being able to operate a community asset in, in the city. And so, it would, wouldn't it be great, since forty-eight percent, forty-eight percent of our land is, is occupied by nonprofits and so therefore don't pay taxes, wouldn't it be wonderful if that forty-eight percent gave back like Macomb Cultural Economic Partnership did today? And so, I encourage everyone who is involved in organizations that are nonprofit that are based in Mount Clemens to encourage your, um, your organizations to think about some things as small as hiring three young ladies and teaching them incredible life lessons along the way, but also, um, pay- paying a minimal amount but making a huge impact in the community, so, um, thank you to them as, again, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
Uh, well, has, as, as has been previously mentioned, school started today, and I just want to give people another reminder to watch for kids as they're going to school and coming home. I noticed today that as school was letting out, some of them are pretty anxious to get out and, and weren't necessarily being real careful about crossing the street, so, so please watch for the kids. And also watch for school buses, uh, and remember that when a school bus stops and its red lights are flashing, you are supposed to stop, and, uh, that's a law, so, um, sometimes people are not always careful about that. Anyway, just those two reminders, have a good evening and a great week.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Uh, I too would like to thank the, uh, ladies here for their cleaning up of Mount Clemens, but I particularly liked their demonstration they gave here. I want to thank Jeff for the tree grant, I know there's two things, there's people that don't like trees and they create a ruckus, and there's also the group of people that are very upset when they have a tree cut down, so they're also very thankful to have it replaced. Also want to thank the ladies that came here tonight regarding the, uh, Shady Side Park, I want to thank them for their dedication to the city of Mount Clemens also, and that is it.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to recognize a couple businesses in our community. One thing I have learned in all the years, and I've probably been here as long as you have, which I know I have, um, you know, people come back to the Clem, and I know a lot of people don't like to be, like, to hear the Clem, they think it's derogatory, but I don't think so. I've lived here all my life, got it. And it says something when you have businesses that have been here as long as these businesses have been here, because they could go anywhere. Um, Cavan Tree by Better Built, it's on the corner of Southbound, Grashit, and Cass, they have been there for forty years, and I think, again, I think that says something when businesses stay around a community, they're part of our community. The other business, and they have had several owners, but they have been here for seventy years, Crots Flowers. So, let's keep these businesses here, um, patronize them, you know, Crots, great flo- uh, florists, Cavan Tree, if you need Cavan Tree, go see them. Shop locally, it, it's so important because that, this is the type of businesses we need to continue to support, because they are here. We're a small town, and I always say, a small-town USA, but we're a small town, you can feel it, and when businesses stay here and continue to prosper, it says a lot about our community and the folks in it. So, I just want to congratulate them, I will be giving them a certificate, I will be stopping by their businesses, but I just wanted to acknowledge so everybody is aware of it. And with that, the all-night ruckus and party at the Rec Bowl for the, um, all the Clemmer- Clemminights will be there, don't forget on Friday night, so have fun, be careful, and, uh, thank you. And I need a motion to go into exact session.
So, moved?
Second.
Ro-Cop?
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crap?
Yes.
Mensor?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Five-minute recess. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
So, uh, it's important.
All votes in favor?
I oppose.
So...